Good evening and welcome to this evening's Select Board meeting for the Town of Rockland. Today is Tuesday, December 17th. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded for playback by WRPS at youtube.com/wrpsrockland. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. Please also be advised that the open meeting law gives the Chair of a public body discretion to decide if public comment will be permitted, but the law does not require that a public body allow public comment or public participation during its meeting. First, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Chief Dufferty, could you please start us off?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have community announcements, Courtney?
Three quick announcements before I hand it back over to you. The first is just that Town Hall will be closed on December 24th and 25th. It's closed on the 24th because it falls in, within a week, a weekday. And so our policy is that if it falls in a weekday, we're closed on December 24th and December 25th, and we'll also be closed for the New Year's holiday as well. So just a quick announcement for the community, we'll be closed the 24th, the 25th, and the 1st of January. The second thing is the South Shore Regional Vocational Technical School Special Election Ballot Vote on January 25th, 2025, and the Town of Rockland's Debt Exclusion Ballot Vote on January 25th, 2025. And then the third is the Rockland Fire Station Building Project will have the Annual Town Election Debt Exclusion Ballot Vote on April 12th, 2025, and the Annual Town Meeting Vote on May 5th, 2025.
Next, we have the Rockland Fire Station Building Project.
Oh, yep, that was just a quick announcement that the Annual Town Election Debt Exclusion Ballot Vote would be on April 12th, 2025, and the Annual Town Meeting Vote on that project would be on May 5th, 2025.
Thank you. Next, the Board would officially like to recognize Peter, AKA Peter Park Ewell, who is retiring for the Park Superintendent. Okay? And we have something to read. Peter, you're here with your family, if you'd like to come on up.
Hi, congratulations, good. As liaison to your department, it's been a pleasure to sometimes call you at 6:30 or 7:00 in the morning with issues on the rail trail.
Most of the time, though.
Yeah, I know, you never complained, but anyway. Pete, as you approach your well-deserved retirement, we honor an incredible milestone, 40 years, one month, and one day of unwavering dedication to the Town of Rockland Parks Department. Since its first day on November 26, 1984, Peter has been the driving force behind transformative projects that have shaped the heart of Rockland's community spaces. Under Peter's leadership, Veterans Memorial Stadium has seen remarkable improvements, including a new roof, upgraded lighting, expanded seating, enhanced restrooms, a modern press box, and most recently, a cutting-edge scoreboard display. His commitment didn't stop there. Peter spearheaded the construction of the Park Department's very first garage building facility, setting a strong foundation for future operations. Peter's had an incredible impact on Rockland's youth sports programs as well. His dedication to maintaining and enhancing Rockland's fields has benefited generations of young athletes. He's the organizer behind projects such as the installation of the Little League Field dugouts, the creation of the Rockland Youth Soccer Office and Clubhouse, and the addition of the beloved stadium snack bar. Thanks to Peter, Hartzell Park now boasts a vibrant nine-hole disc golf course, offering a new way for families and residents to connect with nature. Peter worked collaboratively across departments to bring projects to life, even in challenging times with tight budgets. Peter's resourcefulness, resilience, and positivity shone through. His creative solutions and tireless work ethic have left an incredible mark on Rockland. While acknowledging Peter as a quiet yet formidable force, humble and never seeking the spotlight, we share his contributions to this community, as they are deserving of recognition. As Peter retires on December 27, 2024, we celebrate his remarkable journey and the enduring legacy he leaves behind. Thank you, Peter, for your 40 years of service and for making Rockland a better place for all.
I want to thank everybody for coming for us, but I don't know if you get all that information, but I love it. Nothing gets done by me. It was my park, the park commissions I've had in the past on Justin and Scott, that I feel comfortable leaving. And in Donna's words, when you retired, I think it's just time. Comfortable, like I said, with the commission I've got now, and Justin and Scott are going to bring it to the next level for sure, I know. You know, and a very understanding wife for jumping out all the times on weekends, but thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Peter, I don't think we're, as a board, I don't think we're completely done congratulating you or recognizing you tonight, so I know this is extremely uncomfortable, this is the last place you want to be, standing in front of the Rockland.
I like thanking people.
I was surprised when she said, if you'd like to come up, you didn't just stay back there, because the last thing you would want to do is actually be up in front of us.
I was going to tell you, come back to me.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Peter, obviously, I've known you for a long time, I've worked with you a long time. And, you know, I got thinking, you know, what would be appropriate to send you off for the 40 years, and thank you for the 40 years that you've dedicated to the town tirelessly. So I had Doug reach out to the park commissioners, and they were 100% in agreement individually that the Board of Selectmen would potentially discuss taking the next steps, or actually, I would make a motion that we name the park building after you, and refer to it from this day forward as the Peter Park Ewell Field House, or whatever other language. It's literally the house that Pete built, and from this day forward, if the rest of the Board is on board, I'd like to have that named after you. Seeing as you guys are one of the founding families in town, and I don't think there's really anything named after you guys in town, in which case, I think it'd be appropriate that your name be the first one up there. You don't agree, but I think you'll find a lot of people in this room that think it's more than appropriate, but the least we can do.
I'll second that motion.
Appreciate it.
So there's a motion? Oh, I'm not the Chair, I'm sorry.
Can, with a second?
I'll totally second it.
And all those in favor?
Anybody got tissues?
With that, we have a citation from Senator Keenan. John, would you be able to read that, please?
All right, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Senate official citation. Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Peter Ewell in recognition, your retirement from the Rockland Parks Department after 40 years of outstanding and dedicated service to the Town of Rockland. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes and continued success that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested and a copy therein transmitted to the Clerk of the Senate, signed by Karen Spilka, Michael Hurley, and John Keenan dated December 27, 2024.
Okay. And on behalf of the Town of Rockland and the Select Board, I would like to read our official plaque this evening. So the Town of Rockland presents the Certificate of Recognition to Peter Park Ewell. In recognition of 40 years in the Rockland Parks Department, November 26, 1984 to December 27, 2024, our community extends to you its heartfelt thanks and appreciation for your tremendous dedication and energy on behalf of the Town of Rockland, Massachusetts, this December 27, 2024. So that will be on December 27.
Thank you. I'm all done. You know, I'm going to argue with you about the building thing.
Just shut up and say thanks.
It's been a long time, it's been a good time. Like I said, I'm finally comfortable with the commission I got now, and Justin and Scott bringing it up to the next level.
And Peter, I know that you have many friends and family, if you'd like to come on up and take a picture with Peter up here, you're more than welcome.
It's not just Pete. Don't everybody jump at once.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, well.
And thank you.
No, please, I'm not going anywhere, anyway.
Are we going down? We're just going to stand here so that they can?
I think we might.
We'll stand here. Oh, you'll stand here?
I'm sitting now that there's more. Aren't you guys?
Next, we have the approval of the minutes from December 3, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Next, we have new business, Courtney?
Sure, so we had a request come in from Jackie Barardi from Players Sports Bar and Grill, requesting an extension for their closing time on December 31, 2024. Oh, there she is. All good. Jackie, if you want to just come on up.
She was requesting the 2:00 AM closing, they normally do on New Year's Eve, and we don't have to delay it always, so.
Great, that was what I was going to say, so you're going to have a detail like you had before?
Yeah, we put in for it.
Okay, and are there any questions from the Board?
No, this is a pretty standard request, they do it most years.
Great, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I know that Dave Taylor is here, if we could have Dave Taylor on up, and Doug, you're going to?
Yeah, Doug, do you want to tee it up?
Lead this, and we have this streetlight update with the Highway Superintendent, Dave Taylor.
Sure, can you hear me okay?
Yep, you can, hi Doug.
Great, hi there. So Tiffany had asked about putting this on the agenda, because she's heard a number of questions and concerns from a variety of people in town asking about streetlights, whether it's repairing existing ones that are broken, or, you know, what the process is for potentially getting new ones installed. So I asked Dave if he's able to attend, and I see he's there, so that's great. Dave will be able to answer a lot of your questions. I just thought I'd give a little bit of background information, and Dave, feel free to jump in, if I get anything wrong here. But when I started about five and a half years ago, the town had already acquired ownership of most of the streetlights in town. So prior to my time being here, they were all owned and maintained by National Grid, and there were surcharges or fees that were put on our electric bills where we would pay for the lights and for the maintenance of the lights, replacement of the lights, and obviously for the electricity. There was some analysis done and a program that was launched, again, prior to my coming here, where the town could acquire most of those lights, and there'd be long-term savings to the town, because while there's the upfront cost of the acquisition, we wouldn't have that recurring cost forever in our utility bills for the maintenance. So we've done that. However, I noticed, or I should say, we noticed right after I started, Dave and I, that while we had acquired the lights, we actually had no budget to maintain them or to replace them or to add new ones. And so if you remember back to the time when Elizabeth Zaleski was our Town Accountant, that's when Biz and I put in the first budget for streetlights, and it's now up to $30,000 a year. So the budget is $30,000 a year for the maintenance replacement of the lights that we own, National Grid still does own some of the other, some of the other lights. And I also included in your packet, I asked the Town Accountant to run a couple of unit reports just to show what we spent year-to-date this year and last year. Just generally, as far as the process goes, there's an outside private company that we hire that does the maintenance on lights that are broken, or will replace them. So generally, what we'll do is if we get a request or complaint that one is out, we'll call the Highway Department, and either Dave or his executive assistant, Sue Egan, will put it on a running list they have. They don't send every individual request straight to the company, because it ends up costing a lot more money every single time they come back. So they, Dave and his staff sort of wait until there's a critical mass of issues, then they send that list over to the external vendor, and they come and make the repairs or replacements. So that's generally my understanding, and Dave, maybe I'll turn it over to you to get into more detail about what you're doing.
Wow, you kind of stole my thunder, I had a whole history of the lights and everything working down here. So Doug's correct on that, so that was, the LED conversion was done when Alan Shaka was on, so roughly 75% of the streetlights are on that, on that conversion, the other 25% is still over at National Grid. Some of those are floodlights, some of those are on town, like park areas, open space areas where there are some floodlights, and the rest of those are in neighborhoods with like homeowners' associations where they may have minimalized two to three lights, underground infrastructure in regards to electrical, and that, you know, like you would be, examples would be like Millbrook, Frances Crossing, Sawmill, Cornmill. So those are still over to National Grid. So those obviously are easier to maintain, because if we get a call on those, we literally reach out to National Grid and they send a crew out. Now, in regards to ours, what happens is if we get a call from a resident, we'll either have to go out early morning or late at night, and then we'll check, get the pole number, and then what we do is we have a running worksheet with our contract, which is Daigle Electric, and we just, as they come in, we add it to the sheet, and then that's, you know, where the priority is one and goes down the list. So you could, they can do up to, they've done up to eight or nine a day, so, and roughly those range, those days for a day of work is roughly between 1,500 to 2,500. Some of those, if like the sconces or the arms have to be replaced, then obviously they get, they're a little bit more expensive. So that's how the maintenance work, and then new additions, what happens is we'll get calls, you know, from residents, can we add a light? We've actually had calls from residents where they want to subtract a light. So we have done the subtractions, and what we do is we keep, we keep those lighting fixtures on anything that we've taken out, or anything where there's been an accident, you know, if a car hits it, you know, we'll have to go out, we're called out, the police give us a heads-up on that, you know, utility pole got hit, we go out, retrieve the light, and then that light has to be put back on, and the contractor has to pay for that. Usually when that happens, the light's damaged of some sorts, and then the town's on the hook for that, unless the insurer, the person that hit it is insured, then we can run it through the insurance. But a lot of those, you come back and they're uninsured, or, and the town is still on the hook for that. A lot of those are done, like, so we do do additions, like when we're doing the roads, it's more prevalent, people reach out when we're doing roads over, like Gardner Street, for example, you know, we were over there, residents like, hey, can you look at adding the light? And that, as we're out there at the roads, those seem like, you know, a good, good follow-up to add additions on some of those roads, main roads. Same thing like with Wayma Street, we just completed Wayma Street, people reached out, we go out, we, what we call a night audit, it's usually me, I'll go out, look and see what we have for lighting, what type of lighting issues we have. Wayma Street's very, very dark, hardly has any lights on it, and on our main road. So obviously, that would be something to add on. And then you have to also look in, do we have infrastructure improvements coming up? Do we want to add lights and then actually be redundant and tear those lights out, you know, in three or four years? So we have to factor all those in when we're adding, adding lights. The other issue is, is the lights are starting to drop off in their age right now. So now we're getting into year seven, year eight on the light, on those lights, so we're starting to replace more lights this year than we have before. So we need to, if we want to add lights, we could put those residents' lights on, on a waitlist, and what we have to do is we have to wait till almost May, till the end of fiscal year, to see where we are maintenance-wise for the budget, and then we could, we could look at some of those additional lights. There's a lot of different factors, there's also National Grid, so if National Grid is doing a pole, utility pole project, they just did Union Street, they did 10 conversions of lights, out of those 10, we had seven lights or sconces on those lights. Now, National Grid is not allowed to touch our lighting apparatus and swap them over, so we have to pay our contractor to swap those lights over, because it's contractual with National Grid, and also they don't want to assume the liability of our lighting fixtures at that point. So out of those 10 poles, we have to pay for the eight lights to get swapped out. So it's been a back and forth, because we pushed back, we held out some work from National Grid to try to get them to do the lights, but in the end, they're not going to swap the lights out, so we have to pay our contractor. So that's where we are with the lighting issue on Union Street. That's essentially it. The only other thing I could bring up is in regards to that, if we add developers, and developers have to do a utility pole upgrade, like if you look at Dyce Street, what we've added, we've added that to our remediation with development out of our department. So if they're swapping the poles out, and there happens to be light fixtures on them, we make the developer pay for that switch-out, so it doesn't come over to the town. So I think that, that pretty much covers it on what we have right now. The new installs range between 1,500 to $3,000 on a light, because it depends on what you have for primary lines there and what the hookup could be. Sometimes it will require more, more electrical work by the contractor, so the range is, like I said, 1,500 and up. So we have to factor all that in, so.
Thank you. One question, so when you had mentioned that, right now, the Union Street, so I did get a call last week, and the concern was from Town Hall down to Market, how dark that is, and that being a safety concern from somebody who parks actually at the church right there, and then it being so dark, so are those the lights that you're talking about?
Yes, so it's not to Market, it's actually, essentially from Richdells down to Eastwater, Westwater. The lighting down on the lower end of Union Street seems to be fine, there were a couple of lights out going further up, but we called in on those that are actually, happened to be going out, that wasn't part of the utility pole conversion project.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so if residents are concerned, what's the best protocol that you would suggest in terms of, you know, they're having lights out on their street or whatnot, basically just to contact the Highway Department?
Yeah, that seems to be the, that seems to be the ongoing protocol right now, they call up, and then when, like I said, I usually will get a couple, if I'm out early in the morning, right now, obviously, it's dark in the morning, when I'm going to work, I'll come in a little earlier. I usually designate one day, I'll go out and look at whatever got called in, we add it to the ongoing worksheet with the contractor, and they just get done. And again, they can range from something very simple, like a photo cell, which could cost, you know, a few hundred dollars. We obviously get charged for like bucket truck rent, you know, for them using that, so it ranges, so.
Great, any other questions?
Yeah, Dave, just a, just a question. So you mentioned that there's a lot of maintenance issues, and this was actually brought up to me, somebody asked me some questions about how, why it was so dark at the stroll at certain points.
Yeah.
And I happened to look up at some of the poles, and they had lights on them. Now, I'm not an expert, you know, is it, is it that some of these poles, the lights are out, or those light fixtures just don't have bulbs, or is there like a mechanism where we can turn on those lights for certain days, or is it just if the light is in there, it's on at all times, if not?
No, they're all on photo cells, they're all LEDs, so when, when it gets dark, they go on.
So they were just out for the, they were out on the day of the stroll anyway, or that section?
The ones without, were out for the stroll, where we had two on the upper end of Union Street going up, we called those, we called those in, so those are on the priority list to get done. And then these ones here are the ones that I refer to as the National Grid pole, pole conversion project.
So like the one at Union Square?
Yes, yes, you turn the corner and you're going up.
That's what I conveyed to the resident, because I think you and I talked about it before, that that was a National Grid issue, and I passed that along then.
Yeah, there's eight lights out, so that's significant.
That's very, it was really dark in that section, I couldn't believe how dark it was.
And that was the pushback, yeah. So we had pushback going back and forth, well, we're not allowing any more pole conversion projects, and they pushed back, and there hasn't been, I don't think, I mean, Tommy can attest, there hasn't been any more utility pole work for a while, right?
No, you're killing us on D.
So it's kind of a fine line, too, so.
Are you still on overtime? All right, all right, fair enough.
So that, obviously, that's a concern, because we had eight lights out due to that conversion.
Yeah.
And then we had two other ones out, just that naturally going out.
I just wanted to make sure I was accurate, because the resident had asked me, and I felt like you and I had this conversation, and I felt like those were the ones that we had identified in the past, but then when I was hearing it, I was like, oh, wait a minute, are these, is this us that owns these poles, you know, technically downtown? And I felt like that was the ones that were National Grid, I just wanted to make sure I was giving the right info.
Yeah, the whole utility pole thing is really weird, because National Grid installs the poles, but Verizon actually pulls the poles, because they're the last ones on the pole when the pole comes out. So, but, long story short, those eight, eight lights are added to it, the contractor's going to come out, swap out all those, you know what I mean? And then when we get closer to the end of fiscal year, like I said, we'll look at some of those other concerns, obviously, we want to add some over on, even, even if it's one or two on Wayma Street, because there's literally, there's not one from Reservoir all the way up to Abington Street. There aren't any lights on them, so, so we'll look at that.
How, how long does it take usually for National Grid to come do their things? I remember on the rail trail with the crosswalk lights, it took them like close to a year? Maybe over a year?
Yeah, well.
It was a long time.
Well, I think that was, that was like right past COVID.
Oh, okay.
So there was issues with us getting some of the apparatus, it's so hard, like those, those push-button systems, number one, like the first ones that we installed over around the schools, they were 20 grand a set back then, now they're close to 50,000 a set. So and then if you add the, you know, the sensor ballards that are there, those sensor ballards are 10, $10,000, $12,000 a set, so you're waiting for that apparatus, and they can't actually do the hookup until the apparatus is installed, so they can't have a live feed. It's kind of like when, if you're getting gas.
It's apples and oranges with the.
Yeah, so you're kind of waiting, you're on, you know, when the apparatus gets in, contractor installs it, and then you got to have the grid come out, and they're on their own timeline. Again, we, we go back and forth, we have a very good rapport with National Grid, so more on the gas side than the electric side, so, but the two work off each other, so.
All right.
Great. Any other questions? Really appreciate your coming out tonight, thank you.
You got it.
Next, if we could invite Allison Quinn up to the front, we have a report on the, an update on the Impact Advisory Group Overview with Courtney, the Assistant Town Administrator, and Allison Quinn, the Town Planner. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you. Here, I'll tee it up real quick, just a quick background for you all, the Impact Advisory Group is, it's not a formal committee, it's an informal group that Allison and I have kind of came out of our efforts and community meetings for the MBTA Community Zoning Meetings back in the fall of last year, and spring of last, of this year. And it's really meant to be an informal, small group that offers kind of feedback on different. that offers kind of feedback on different projects, it's very new, it's not a, um, established, um, group. And we're just looking for additional resident input, um, on various issues that came up in those MBTA Community Meetings. Um, and so that's just a quick synopsis of kind of how it came to be. Um, but I'm gonna let Allison dive into kind of the more details on what it actually looks like and, and kind of its goals.
Sure, thank you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come out here tonight and, and speak on this. Um, I know that there's been like a little bit of online chatter, and I like to just keep people informed. Um, everyone can have their own opinion, but I feel like operating from facts is always the best practice. Um, and in that spirit, that's kind of how the Impact Advisory Group came about when we were, um, hosting a series of community meetings and going out to the COA, um, the library, different public spaces to engage residents about the MBTA zoning. It became fairly apparent that, um, there wasn't enough public engagement communications back and forth, so that people weren't really actually able to absorb what was happening. And so we added additional public engagement series, so people could become a little bit more familiar with topics and, and what we were trying to accomplish. Um, from that, we wanted to keep that kind of momentum going with the public. Um, the, the people that are engaged in the Impact Advisory Group were all very active in that engagement process from the MBTA zoning exercise. Um, they came to meetings, they wrote emails, uh, they tend to show up, but they are not on boards and committees in a, in a formal sense. And so it, it made sense for us to kind of be able to get feedback. They represent a cross-section of Rockland residents, everything from a retired person to someone who's engaged in a nonprofit, um, someone who's lived here for multiple generations, um, sorry, I'm a little bit more mobile than I thought it was gonna be. Um, and they, they've been great, we've only met a handful of times thus far. Uh, the first big kind of topic that we talked about was municipal finance, I'm not an expert in that. So we brought in a consultant who is, and she gave them, I think like a good hour and a half overview about municipal finance. They were able to ask her questions, it was recorded and it's available on WRPS, if anyone wants to review it. Uh, this is really still loosely based, and they're the ones who are kind of guiding the conversation and coming up with topics that we discuss. And, um, that's really all it is right now, but I'm happy to, I hope that's helpful for, for a little additional context. Um, happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Yeah, um, so what are, what are your goals?
Our goals are really to understand more about how to have a little bit, uh, better open communication with residents to understand the things that they think about that impact Rockland. Um, you know, I'm a planner, and so I think planner al, always gets, you know, molded into land use, and it is. It's a, it's a big exercise in planning, but sometimes it's like trying to put spokes in a wheel. Um, because it's a collaborative effort among, you know, lots of different disciplines. And so because this is a new department, folks are still a little unclear about what it is that I do here. And I felt like, why not make them part of, part of what I'm gonna do here? Um, and hear from them and, and understand a little bit more about the community needs, um, that's really it.
Can I add just another goal from, for the committee, is just also to, um, try and help us as a town, identify where we have gaps, and identify where we have, um, communications, you know, challenges. And I think that having, um, this group to, just to try and help us think about how we're communicating and what, what additional information residents are looking for, helps us to, as a town, be more responsive to residents and their needs, and helps us to get information that is being requested to, to residents more in real time. And so I think that's another, um, kind of goal, at least of mine with this group, is to, is to think about, um, how we're communicating with residents in a way that helps them come, come to the table informed, ready to participate, engaged, um, and feeling, you know, that they have all the information that they need to make a, to make the best decision for themselves. So I think that's another kind of element of this, is, of this group, is to just help the town to, um, better understand where residents are coming from, different perspectives. And, and like Allison said, it's a, it's a wide cross-section of, um, kind of representation, I think, in the group, so.
And, um, I know that you're still kind of putting the mechanics together, but do you, do you have a, 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 a perspective, like schedule in terms of how often the group will be meeting, or, um, do you have other topics that you're gonna be bringing up? Like of, of just thinking, you know, the upcoming, um, you know, vote tech initiatives, or in terms of, um, our helping kind of, um, get the word out about upcoming town meetings and stuff. It, it, it sounds like a great way to further engage the public, just in general, because you have such a nice cross-section. But I was just wondering, um, if you have an upcoming, um, schedule-ish, you know? And then I also, I didn't realize that these sessions were filmed, so I think that's a great amenity to the public, but it would also be a nice thing to further beyond this meeting, publicize, so that people can, you know, what a, what a great tool. And I'm really excited about what you, what you're doing, I think it's gonna be great.
Yeah, you know, the, the goal is to help the residents understand, you know, where they want to be, cause it's, you know, it's, it's their town, they should have a vested interest in its outcome, um, but not everyone knows the, the tools and, and how to get from point A to point B. Um, we've kind of kept our schedule loose, um, you know, we started in, I think, September. We've had a couple of meetings, actually, was it today?
Two meetings.
Two meetings, and today we, I had like a, you know, come in and.
It was very informal, yeah.
Thanks for participating. Um, but some of the topics they've been expressing interest in, and be, interest in beyond the municipal finance are, um, you know, abandoned properties, blight, you know, things I think that they see, right, things that are tangible to them, you know, what does this mean? Um, and how do we think about addressing those types of topics? I'm hoping that they get to lead the conversation, um, and that we can fill in information gaps. I do think that there is an appetite, um, to learn more about, like the, you know, the Select Board and the goals, overall town, um, short and long-term projects, like the South Shore Vote Tech, that, that did come up today.
Yep.
Um, we shared information with them, um, they've been given a, a one-on-one overview, um, with the Chief Duffy about the, the fire station project. Um, so I think there are those opportunities to, to hear back from their perspectives, how they're receiving that information, so that we can then be more responsive.
Yeah, great, thank you.
So I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna come off, uh, you know, negative or anything like that, I, I definitely applaud the efforts. Uh, it's been a challenge, I think, for us to reach residents over the years. Uh, and we continue to hear that, and we've taken steps, and Rich Penny's in the back of the room, he was on the board with me at the time. We added Facebook, Town Facebook page, we added a town, uh, Twitter account to better inform residents. And, you know, I think you've got a decent group here that is out there in the community, but I think what it really comes down to is, is getting the residents to, I don't wanna say care enough, but getting them to, to want to have the information, right? Like most of the times, like the questions that I ask people when they come up and they ask me, oh, I, or they say, I didn't know that this was going on, how come nobody talked about this? My first question is, did you watch the Selectments Meeting? And they say they don't have time to watch the Selectments Meeting, well, you know, the answer is generally, well, we don't have time to go door-to-door and tell you everything that we talked about at the Selectments Meeting. I think it's great that you guys are taking the step, and I think it's great that you guys are trying to engage, uh, a different audience. I think it's a little disappointing that, that we have to get to this point, because the amount of municipal engagement is at an all-time low. And I don't know if that stems from, you know, people with the federal, you know, feelings on the federal-ish, uh, level, or, or whatever, but, you know, as far as, you know, paying attention to local government, I think it's more important now than, than it ever is. I mean, you have somebody, Joe Reese, you've watched every single Selectments Meeting since what, nineteen forty?
Somewhere around.
Around that, right, right? But, but you messaged me after most meetings, and I did for a while, and say, good meeting tonight, right? But you're, you're engaged, you're involved, and to get residents to that level of involvement, they should be. If you're a member of a community, you have to participate in the direction that the community takes. Every single one of us, I think, feels the same, which is why we're up here, and I think everyone in the crowd tonight, tonight as well, you know, feels the same. But how do we get the people that just wait until it directly affects them?
Yeah.
To get involved, right? Like that's, that's where you hear it first, you know, it doesn't concern them until it concerns them, and then they're in a sudden getting involved.
Yeah, I think that, um, can I answer this really quickly? So I think that, um, I hear your, I hear your point, and, you know, and I hear the board often talk about the lack of engagement and lack of, you know, people stepping up for different positions. And I think that this is an avenue to kind of like, not demystify, but in some cases, to kind of reconnect residents with what is required from them in our, um, in our government structure here in Massachusetts. Cause it is unique, and, and I think that it is, um, important that the town plays some role in helping residents to understand, um, those who aren't able to watch the Select Board, to provide them with other communications avenues.
But that's also.
Quick digestible soundbites.
And that's also kind of the point to that, right? Like with it being, uh, recorded, that's great, but how do we get the residents to go watch it, right?
Yeah.
You, you've mentioned now, and Doug put this on there, uh, at the last meeting he was here, right? He was gonna mention the Vote Tech, and he was gonna mention the, the Fire Station.
Yep.
At every single meeting and community announcements.
Yep.
I guarantee you, we get to January twenty-fifth, and people are gonna say they ain't know about it.
Yeah, I'm sure that they will, and we can't, we can't.
I know.
Not everybody will.
And like I said, I applaud the efforts of this group, I think it's great, I just think it, it's, it's, for me, from, from a standpoint of somebody that's, that's been involved for, for, you know, almost twenty years, it's, it's a little bit disheartening that we, we've got to get to this point to try to get residents involved in their town, you know?
Yeah, I think that's just where we're, where we're at.
I know.
And I think that that's like on us to, to some degree, to adjust to, because I think that that is the communications world we're living in. And so we have to adjust a little bit and be responsive to that. And we're recording most of the meetings that are, have like content in them, like the municipal finance overview. We're not recording every single meeting, but most meetings, if there's a breakdown on some kind of topic that's of interest that we know would be of interest to residents and has an educational component to it, we, we're gonna record them. Um, because really the goal is to just provide residents with more information, so that they can feel more empowered to participate in the process, and to feel like they're more informed on the process. Because the reality is that many people in this day and age don't, don't have that same connection that maybe generations before them have. And so I think it's our job, to some degree, to, to reconnect that, that thread, and help residents to understand that they're, they have to participate in local government. It's actually part of the structure in Massachusetts, it's required. And so I think that's kind of our goal with this group, is to, yes, look at big topics, like municipal finance, and look at topics like housing, and, you know, um, blight and things like that. But it's also to kind of re-engage that civic-minded attitude of like, this is what it can be like for you to be involved. These are the reasons why it's important for you to be involved, these are how you can be involved. And to provide a little bit more familiarity with the, with local government, and local government structure can be intimidating. So I think that, um, that is one of the roles of this group, is to try and help kind of soften that a little bit and, and reconnect residents to being engaged in their community in government, not just on Facebook or in different community meetings. It's important that there are community meetings, but it's also important that, you know, they step up at some point and, and engage.
Now, do you see this group, I mean, this group I think right now is consisting of, you know, five people, so.
Yeah.
Do you see that expanding at some point, or do you think that that would just, you know, kind of?
I think we have to think about digestible chunks of it. Um, you know, I don't know if this is good news or bad news, but the issue of public engagement and people being engaged in local government is, that problem is not unique to Rockland, it's across the board. Um, I think to a certain extent, the advent of social media and the ability for folks to like disseminate information um, across their social networks has really changed the dynamic of how people do engage the government. I think the thing that's, that is lacking is that fundamental understanding of the only power you have in that is to actually show up at a town meeting and vote. So you can say whatever you want, right, on Facebook or Twitter or X or whatever, it's, I'm not on either really of those things. So you can say whatever you want, but the, you know, the power is really a town meeting, you have to show up and, and vote. And so it's our job to make sure that folks are informed before they show up there. And I think this represents an opportunity to understand how people are receiving that information, and what we can be doing better to make sure the information that they're receiving, however they receive it, is accurate.
Exactly, yeah. And like I said, I applaud your efforts, I think it's a great idea, I just, you know, it's been, it's been a battle for a lot of years to try to get the information to people, you know? And it's, it gets frustrating at times, and.
Oh, sure.
And I wish you guys well in the process, you know, if there's anything you need help with, by all means, go for the job.
Yeah, I, I also wanted to mention, um, this is all part of, you know, since Doug came on, professionalizing Town Hall. He hired Courtney, he hired Allison, um, and other things, but this, um, the, the Impact Advisory Group is yet another thing that has been devised to professionalize the Town Hall, to get communication accurate. Um, so misinformation doesn't float out there, and people are well-informed to come to Town Meeting and not vote against their self-interest, because they're not, they don't have the right information. And, um, it's less than two percent of the entire voting populace of the town that makes major decisions on how every one of our pockets either gets turned into rabbit ears more or not. So that, that's what I had to, that's my two cents.
I guess I'll just add, first of all, I think this is a great idea, anything that increases public involvement is a great thing. Uh, one thing that I think, um, I'm hoping that this group comes from is not only us getting information out to the public, but having the public give input to us, cause I think there's a lot of, reason why a lot of people don't want to get involved or don't show up is because they are gonna do what they want anyway, so why bother? I think something like this, where we actually show that we're willing to hear what the public actually wants us to do, rather than us telling them, well, this is what we're going to do, I think that would be huge. So I think this is an excellent, uh, first step in that, um, down that avenue, so, so good job with that.
That is the goal, actually, is to get feedback from residents as well. Like it's, yes, to present information about important projects that are happening in town, and important things that are gonna impact residents, but ultimately, it's to hear from residents, and to hear from, um, friends of those residents, and families of those residents, um, people who we know are constantly in conversation outside of meetings. So I think that that's actually a critical element of this group, and I think that we'll see more of that, so. Can I also talk about the formalizing of this really quickly? I think that at some point down the line, like we could talk about that. And there are models that other municipalities do use to formalize some kind of like civic, kind of engagement, civic leadership program. Um, but I think as a starting point, this is where we're gonna, this is like kind of where we're gonna start. And if that is something that, you know, is of interest down the line, and people are, you know, really involved, and they become very interested and engaged, and, you know, we fill all of our boards and, you know, all the vacancies, then we can have a bigger conversation about that. But I think, you know, our, our goal is really to just focus on engagement, communications, information sharing, so.
Great, thank you both.
Thank you, have a good night.
Next, we have appointments, we have community preservation committee, um, Thomas Roach, if you could please come on up? Of course, welcome, um, for the purpose of the board, if you could please introduce yourself and, um, why you would like to, um, well, your, your, your interest in this committee.
My name's Thomas Roach, 50 Albion Street, in the best town in the South Shore, Rockland, Mass. I've always been community oriented since I first cut here 38 years ago. Litany of things, always trying to be involved in with baseball for over 30 years at different levels. Helped bring back the, uh, American Legion team with my partner Joe Reese. Still involved in the Rockland Cardinals, baseball situation that they still have at the stadium. I even have an island, a street island on, um, Market and Concord Street. And my goal is to beautify that little section so people get a smile when they're driving by, stuff like that. And I try to keep my community involvement. Also worked for the St. Vincent Food Pantry. So when I thought, what else can I do to keep involved? I said, well, I should probably do something with the town. And so I heard of the Community Preservation Act and went to a meeting and was intrigued, very interested in what they do. And I see that what they do can enhance the community, which is what we all want and benefit, improve the benefits around the area. They take care of, um, open spaces, recreational, historical, you know this, and, and, um, affordable housing and all those things impact my town. And I just wanted to be a part of it. So. I applied.
Great, thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments?
No, I've gone, I've gone on for some time now and Tom has always been a, uh, valued member of the community. And I make a emotional appointment. Appreciate him stepping up.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
And thank you for your involvement. Welcome. Next we have the Fire Station Building Committee reappointments.
I think we're just looking for the board, um, to vote on the reappointments of these, um, Fire Station Building Committee members.
Great. So we have the reappointments of Fire Chief Scott Duffy, Lieutenant Charlie Williams, Retired Deputy Chief James Killinger, Rockland resident, Architect Christopher Delphilipo, Rockland resident, Jean Blaney, Rockland resident, Recreation Department, and Austin Clark, Rockland resident and college student. Do I have a motion to appoint, to approve the reappointments?
Motion to reappoint.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? And next we have Doug, you have the, um, FY 26 preliminary budget submission.
Right, thanks Tiffany. So, uh, this is required by the town charter, uh, that we have a, um, preliminary budget, uh, submitted to you and then from you to the finance committee by December 31st. So I, I, I have the, the one-page budget summary in your packet. Uh, this December 31st date is really too soon to have any meaningful budget discussions, uh, as the governor's budget hasn't even come out yet. So, uh, what, what you have in front of you just reflects conservative assumptions that the town accountant put together as we always do. Um, and it's, as is not uncommon at this time of year, very preliminarily, um, you'll see in the bottom right-hand corner, we're looking at a $3 million deficit. And I want to preface several things here. What this reflects is conservative assumptions on revenue, not knowing if we're going to get any extraordinary increases in state aid. And on the expense side, it reflects every department's request. We haven't analyzed any of these requests. We haven't changed a single number in any of the requests. So it's literally, we send out budget request forms, every department puts in what they, what they asked for. Uh, you know, carefully go through this department, department like we always do. There are two particular cost centers though, that I, I think I've mentioned previously and we're going to talk a lot about this winter. Uh, one is our Plymouth County Retirement Assessment. Uh, the county is very, very aggressively, um, trying to fully fund their pension liabilities. And it's, they've accelerated even more than they have in the past. And that alone accounts for a half a million dollar increase. It's over a 9% increase. Uh, so that's difficult. I'll come back to that in a minute. Remind me. The other major cost center that we're projecting will likely have a significant increase this year is our health insurance premiums. And that is something that is not unique to Rockland. Every community in the state is looking at this. Communities throughout the country are looking at it. We've been very fortunate the last five plus years. We've had very low increases, but, um, every, every community, every sector of the economy is going to be looking at higher increases in health insurance than we've had in the past. Those two items alone, the increase in our retirement assessment and the increase in projected health insurance premiums, those two things alone account for more than our entire Prop 2 and 1/2 increase. So if you look on the left side of the one-page revenue and expense sheet, you see Prop 2 and 1/2, a million dollars, maybe 200,000 in new growth. The retirement assessment, health insurance projected increases as of today at least, eat up that entire Prop 2 and 1/2 increase. So, um, it's going to be a difficult budget year. Um, so really that's, that's all I was really, um, prepared to talk about tonight, had to raise to the budget. The one sort of silver lining as it relates to the retirement assessment increases, um, once it is fully funded through the county. And I don't have the exact date off the top of my head. I think it might be 2032, right around there. Our assessment will significantly decrease to the tune of millions of dollars a year. It will drop. And that will obviously, um, greatly help our ability to balance the budget without needing any kind of overrides or things like that. The challenge is going to be getting from here to there, because it's going to be a few more years of, of real pain, um, with these, with these increases. But once we get there and it's fully funded, the assessments we get from Plymouth County will drop to the tunes of, to the tune of multiple, multiple millions of dollars per year. But we're, we're kind of at the mercy of their accelerated, um, efforts to fully fund it. And, uh, it's going to be, it's going to be challenging. So that's all I have for now on that unless you have any questions.
Doug, what's the, what's the pushback to the county commissioners on that?
So, um, we've all been pushing back on that, asked about it. And, you know, for example, when, uh, when Lori was at the Plymouth County Commissioners Meeting just recently, uh, for her advisory group that she's a member of, and she picked up the ARPA check. I know that she specifically asked the county treasurer about that. Um, Lori can speak for herself. I wasn't there. She had a conversation with him, but, you know, the answers tend to be things like, oh, you should join the Mayflower Health Group because that will help you save money. And that's just not a good answer. Because we left the Mayflower Group, we left the Mayflower Group and by leaving, we saved money. That's why we left. And if we had stayed in there, we would have spent more money. So that's not a real answer. Uh, I can't really s- say exactly why they're funding it so aggressively. But we, we, all the, all the town managers in our, in the county are equally frustrated, have given them, uh, our feedback, um, but they're still plowing ahead.
Would it be worthwhile having them in for a meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. I heard Lori say yes, but yeah, we can actually have the county treasurer and.
If it's up to the chair.
Yeah, when I talked to Tom O'Brien, he, um, he, he was kind of pushing back at the town, saying it's the town's responsibility to, to adjust their budgets to this, rather than, hey, can you slow roll this a little more, you know? So that's, he, you know, a- as far as, you know, maybe you don't need to hire as many people, maybe you don't need to hire at, at higher rates. You can save money there. And I'm like, I don't know, it just sounded, I don't know. I, I'm not even going to put my opinion in, but.
Sounds condescending is what it sounds.
Yeah, yeah. It, I agree. But yeah, no, having him in would be great. He offered to come in to talk to us about this.
And I mean, I, I appreciate the fact that they want to get the pension fully funded. That's obviously a good thing that needs to be done. No one's quibbling with that, but we're stuck with the reality of we're limited in our, in the revenues we can generate by Prop 2 and 1/2, right? 2 and 1/2% plus new growth. And we're looking at an over 9% increase in the retirement assessment. On, on top of other cost centers that also increased by significantly more than 2 and 1/2%. So, you know, I'd hope there'd be some recognition that, uh, you know.
Plus we're at a point where we're, we're expecting another, uh, potential decrease in the way.
Right, right.
The timing's just terrible. I mean, that, the goal and the idea is, it makes sense, but timing's terrible.
Right, the timing's tough. You know, i- if we can get through, you know, these next, you know, again, I have to look at the exact end date, you know, six to eight, uh, years. Then, you know, whoever's, you know, if I'm not here, if you're not in your roles, who's, who's ever in these roles, finance committee, will be in a substantially better, you know, financial position because this revenue will not be freed up to help, you know, fund our regular operating budgets. But we're just going to have to find a way to get there.
Kind of slightly changing subjects. There's something that, um, mentioned something that we're looking at doing in Mansfield with regard to the health insurance is offering a high deductible, um, health insurance plan as an option. Those are usually significantly less money. And then, um, maybe coordinating either like an HSA program or, um, other insurance companies will offer ways that you can get reimbursed for some of these out-of-pocket expenses. So that might be something, um, you may want to look at, uh, doing here. Uh, another thing with having that high deductible plan, um, especially with the health insurance going up as much as it is, you might begin to get into trouble with the Affordable Care Act because you need to offer a affordable plan. And if these are going up 10, 12% and our salaries are going up 2 to 3%, eventually you're going to get to the point where the IRS is going to hammer you on a, on a fine if you're no longer offering a, um, an affordable health plan according to the, uh, the ECA. So just something I thought I were looking at doing in Mansfield that thought you may want to, you know, consider looking at it here.
Yeah, John, those are all very good points. Uh, just the other day, we had our, uh, insurance advisory group meeting and that's made up of representatives from all the unions. And they did talk about, went with our, um, with our insurance consultant. And they did talk about some of those things like HSA plans and other options. So, um, those are all very good points, John. We'll definitely be looking at those.
Okay, cool.
Great. Uh, thank you. And Doug, next we have the outreach materials and mailer for January 25th, 2025. South Shore Tech Building Project Special Elections.
Great, thank you Tiffany. So I know I sound like a broken record and I'm going to, this record's going to stay broken until at least January 25th because we have to keep talking about this, um, this school building project for South Shore Tech. And again, for, um, and I know Town Council John Clifford is on the Zoom. He's here as well. He, he may jump in if, uh, there's more to add. But just as a very quick recap before we get to the specific information in your packet and the vote that I'm looking for. Um, there's a large school building project, about $276 million in total, about $163 million in net after state aid from the MSBA. There'll be a regional ballot election on January 25th that the South Shore Tech District called. Each town clerk will run, run that election in their own towns. It's a winner, uh, take all. There's no weighted votes. It's just, uh, each, each, each vote counts as one. There's no, no weights associated with the votes. There's also no funding associated, uh, with the votes. It's just, do you want the new school? Yes or no? No town meeting required or authorized for this type of regional school building project. So as you all know, at, at a previous meeting, uh, we had a lot of discussion and you voted to hold a Rockland only special election ballot where we have a Prop 2 and 1/2 debt exclusion question that'll be, uh, at the Rockland election, which will be same date, time and place, room as the South Shore Tech election. So when people go to vote for the South Shore Tech project, they'll go in and they'll get one ballot, one piece of paper for the South Shore Tech, um, project. Yes or no? Do you want the new school? And then on the other side of the room, there's another ballot for the Rockland special election saying, do you want to, um, raise your taxes, uh, above and beyond Prop 2 and 1/2 for a debt exclusion to pay for that school? So that's the background. So what I'm, what I have in your packet is, uh, a lot of outreach material that we as a team and Courtney in particular has put together a lot of the material in your packet that's just, um, just facts about what's being proposed, directing people to the South Shore Tech website, um, explaining what the costs are, what the average single-family, um, home tax increase, you know, will look like. And I'll, uh, just state again, it's roughly as of the beginning of this project, and I'll explain why I say the beginning, but in the beginning, it's roughly around $35 million would be a Rockland share. And that'll equate to roughly $250 to $300 per year tax increase on the average valued single-family home, which right now is valued a little over $517,000. Now, one of the things that gets a little tricky is, um, and it, but it's a good thing that the, the regional agreement with South Shore Tech is in the process of being ratified by all the towns. Rockland did it last month. It's going to be a periodic rolling average that will relook at each town's share. So as our enrollment, I should say, our percentage of total enrollment will likely decrease in the future. And our share of the total debt, uh, will, will likely decrease in the future. But these are all projections based on Marshfield and other towns coming in, so it's hard to firmly pin down. So that's part of why we have this range, $250 to $300. It'll likely start at close, it'll likely start the first couple of years if this project passes. There'll be very, very little cost at all because they're just doing final design, hiring a project manager, bidding, that kind of thing. Once the project gets built, we'll probably start closer to the $300 range and then over a time, and that'll probably start again in a few years. Maybe FY, um, 20, you know, 6 or 27. And then it'll likely decrease closer to the, to the 250 mark. So all that being said, there's, you know, I won't go through all the background outreach material that Courtney has that's in the binder. It's also on our town website. The main thing I wanted to talk about is the post, is the postcard. And I'm going to share my screen, um, and I know it's already in your packet, but just in case there's folks, um, in the room or if WRPS is able to, um, to zoom in. So the idea that we had is, and we haven't done this before in my time in Rockland, but given that this is a highly unusual, um, ballot election for a significant project that has the potential to raise taxes to pay for it, I'd like to propose that we send out a physical postcard mailer to every home that has at least one registered voter. We had originally talked about internally as a team, one postcard out to every single voter, but then we realized, well, one home may have four voters. Let's not duplicate that unnecessarily. So through the help of the town clerk's office, we were able to get a, a, a list of ho, of, of addresses that, um, have at least one registered voter, so we don't have to send out, um, multiples. We also decide, we're also recommending not attaching things to property tax bills uh, because, you know, property owner might live out of town, might not even be a, you know, a registered voter and a renter in town, you know, might not get a tax bill and wouldn't get the mailing otherwise. So that's why I think sending it to every home, at every address, I should say, that has a registered voter. Now, there's very, very strict rules on what we're allowed to communicate publicly. We can't advocate for or against a project. We can't say vote yes or vote no. We can only stick to facts. So, uh, I've been working with a printer and I have a template for the right size of a postcard. And I put together a draft of what I think would make sense to put in the mailer. Again, with the help of really all the department heads. We, we had a lot of good input from a lot of different staff on this. I've also had John Clifford review it and he, very importantly, has run this by the State Secretary of the Commonwealth to make sure that we're not inadvertently violating any election laws. Um, and we have gotten the, they don't necessarily say, yes, we love it. This is great, but they said there's no, you know, there's no real problems that they do see with it. So what's on the screen right now is the front of the postcard. You see the return address up here with the select board. The blank spot in the lower right is where all the addresses will go. On the left, we have the town seal, important public notice, special elections with the dates, the times that the polls are open, the polling location. And then a highlight, Rockland voters, see the back of this card for more important information about the elections. And then the next page is where we're able to kind of cram in as much of the information as we can on a small postcard. So again, we have the date and time of the elections. We split it up into two pieces. The top half is information just about the project. South Shore Tech, it's pretty much everything I just talked about a few minutes ago. Uh, the, the, the total cost, uh, a regional ballot, um, does not require each town's individual approval. It's, it's tallied in the aggregate. No town meeting, uh, required for this project. And you'll see a QR code that we generated that if someone scans with their phone, that'll bring them to the South Shore Tech website for their project. Then down below, we have a highlight for the Rockland local debt exclusion ballot question that you. ballot question that you authorized. And again, it's, it's, you know, just trying to say plain, plain language, this is a Prop Two and a Half debt exclusion tax increase to fund our share of the project, should it pass at the regional ballot. Then you can scan the code to the right to get information about tax impacts, and also if folks want to contact the Town Clerk's Office in case they need to get an absentee ballot. So what I've looked at in talking to some local printers is to send this out, and there's a slight additional cost, but I think it's worth it to put it on very bright colored yellow stock paper so that it doesn't just get kind of tossed aside with other mail. The all-in cost is right about four thousand dollars. That includes the printing, the postage, and the, the physical mailing, which I'll figure out the funding of that from somewhere. I'm not worried about that four thousand dollar cost. So that's the main purpose tonight, is I, I'm open to any questions, comments, discussion you might have. But ultimately, I'd love to have a vote for you to support us sending out this postcard. And then lastly, I'll say, a thought that I had is, I think, going forward, for any project that, or I shouldn't even say project, any time that we're proposing to raise taxes beyond Prop Two and a Half, whether it's an operational override or a debt exclusion, I think we should do something like this. I think we should do a physical mailing if we're looking to do a Prop Two and a Half increase for anything. I wouldn't recommend it for every single annual election, annual town meeting, because then I think we're just wasting money for annual things that people should be aware of. But I think a two-and-a-half exclusion is rare enough, and, and raising taxes is important enough that it warrants it. That's all I had. I know, like I said, John is here. I don't know, John, if you had anything you wanted to add or correct that I may have talked about.
No, I think you covered it well, Doug.
Great. Any questions?
Yeah, I, I just have one real quick one. On the, the Rockland local ballot, I would maybe underline, should it pass? Because to me, that's been the, the, the thing that I think people are gonna be confused about, because people who vote against debt exclusions think that that kills the project. So, I mean, I know the words are there, but maybe do something to emphasize those three words would help people hopefully understand that voting no on the debt exclusion doesn't mean the project dies. That's what the first, that's what the other ballots for.
Yeah, that's easy to do. I'm happy to do that.
Okay. That's it. That's the only suggestion. I think this is a great idea, actually. So.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
Yeah.
And I also wanted to say, you know, you say that on average, a person's taxes will go up two hundred and fifty to three hundred. People come up to me and say, oh, that's per quarter? And I said, no, that's the whole year. So, you know.
Yep.
Maybe emphasizing that.
Yep, and it's, yes. So that's a very good point, Lori. I want to highlight again, though, that that's for the average single-family home valued at a little over five hundred seventeen thousand dollars. If your home is valued at more than that, your increase will be more. If your home is valued less than that, your increase will be less. And it's not your current value on Zillow or what a Realtor tells you. It's based on the value that the assessing department values at, which trails the local real estate market by a year or so. But no, it's a good, it's a good point, Lori. And it's, what I find tricky is, you know, it's easy for two people to go out to dinner at a reasonable restaurant and spend a hundred dollars. I mean, that, that's really not hard to do. But it's hard to talk about that because for some people, that's a luxury. That's not an easy thing to do. So it's, you know, it's, it, it, it's a difficult thing. We broke it down before into what's the cost per month, or the cost per day? Is it a cup of coffee? Things like that. And we've, we've done those things, but, you know, I've been met with, I've, I've been met with, with resistance in, in kind of framing it that way. But that's a very good point.
Okay. With that said, do I have a motion to approve the postcard mailing as discussed?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I, I'm, I'm guessing we'll most likely send this out like in the, like, the beginning of January. We're thinking kind of like that first week of January. So I figured if we send it now, it's just gonna get lost probably in all the holiday mail. And I don't want it to go too close to the election, because then there's not enough time for people to plan. So we kind of figured like the first week of January, a couple of weeks before, made sense.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. Next, I had something I wanted to bring up for discussion. Typically, the select board meetings are the first and third Tuesday of every month. Upcoming February meeting, we have, the first would be on the February first, fourth. The second would be on the eighteenth. The eighteenth is school vacation, and it is a high tra, travel week. And with that, I was going to recommend that if we were to have just the February fourth meeting on our schedule, taking out the eighteenth, but then at the same time, if need be, we could always add an additional, if something came up that was, you know, of urgency that we had to actually, you know, meet, then we could potentially meet on, on the other Tuesday. So I wanted to see. It's come up in the past. We've never acted on it. So I think it would be timely to bring it up now.
You mean the eighteenth, or are you talking the twenty-fifth?
Uh, taking out the eighteenth and just meeting on the fourth.
Right. And if something comes up, we'll.
Right, then it could potentially be on the eight, uh, twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, gotcha. Okay.
I'm not against it, but Doug, just, I mean, that's, that's kind of the thick of budget season. A lot of moving parts at that point. What are your concerns, if any?
Yeah, you know, I, I'm okay for now. I think if, if you leave it as though, you know, you plan on not meeting during vacation week, so folks with plans don't have to stress about it. And then as we get closer to it, if, if I think there's really something important that warrants it, just as Tiffany and Lori were saying, then I, I think we'll need to call it in one of the other two weeks. So I, I'm okay planning by here for now, I guess is what I'm saying.
So with the same of by April?
And I'll, I'll defer to whatever you guys want to do. Whatever you want to meet's fine with me.
Um, potentially. It, it all depends. Right now, I wanted just to bring this one up.
Well, I mean, you know, the, the flexibility during school vacation week is, so you're, are you gonna be here?
I personally am not.
You're not? Okay. And I may be away as well, but I could bump in on Zoom, so.
Okay. So with that, would we need a motion, Doug, or is that just, just up for discussion right now?
I, I think if you just have a consensus that, you know, you're not gonna meet on, on the vacation week, that's fine. I'll plan accordingly. It'll probably be a slightly bigger meeting, you know, that, that first meeting, that, the earlier meeting will probably be a little heavier. And if something comes up, and I think we need to schedule an additional one, I'll let you know. But I think a consensus is fine.
Okay, thank you. Is there any opposition to it?
I mean, I'm, I'm not against it for February, but I, I think it's really, we gotta really be careful looking at the April vacation because that's going into town meeting. And there's always bring-ups, and there's always a lot of things to do, and, and the business of the town obviously has to, you know, continue. I mean, I do think we should put something, you know, a temporary placeholder, just so that, you know, and it's the rest of the board, we have an idea if we should make ourselves available on the eleventh or the twenty-fifth. Just for our planning purposes as well, you know? I mean, I make a motion, we move the meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Mike, that's a good idea. Maybe if you guys want to come to a consensus on what the backup date for a second meeting would be, if we have.
So I say, I'm, I'll make a motion that we move the meeting from the eighteenth to the twenty-fifth, if necessary.
Actually, could I, could I request the eleventh?
Well, I just figured that because the, we have the meeting on the fourth, we've just gone over everything. So we may not have anything to say at that point. But by the eighteenth, we're certain to have something. By the twenty-fifth, one hundred percent would be more.
That's fine. I personally will not be available on the twenty-fifth, but at the same time, right. Okay, you'll, you'll be in time.
Likely, yeah.
Okay, that sounds great.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
So, so I, I couldn't hear everything. Is the backup the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Next, we have the CDBG Project Cap Waiver Request. Doug?
Great, thanks Tiffany. So this is something we've done pretty regularly. As you know, the CDBG program is subject to all kinds of federal rules. And they have a, there's a cap of a forty thousand dol, forty thousand dollars per unit. And especially lately, post-COVID, as construction costs have come up, we've been forced to seek these waivers because just the actual cost of construction greatly exceeds these older federal limits. You'll see in the memorandum from our manager of our CDBG program, Wayne Dara, you'll see they got three bids for the project, sixty-seven thousand, seventy thousand, and seventy-six thousand dollars. So I won't go forward reading the rest of the memo, but I, I think as always, you'll see this is really important, you know, life safety work, dealing with, you know, frames and egress and smoke and carbon and oxide detectors, you, you name it. So it's really important stuff, and I urge you of all guests to grant the waiver.
Thank you.
Make motion to get the waiver requested.
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Other new business not reasonably anticipated?
We have none.
None.
Okay, next is old business. Rich Penny, I know that we have you here. We have the town charter updates amendments. And Rich, if you could please come on up. Thanks for coming, Rich.
Thanks for calling me, old Tiffany.
That I did not say.
How are you?
Very good. Thank you for coming in.
No problem.
Tiffany, do you want me to give any introduction before Rich gets into his thoughts? Would that be helpful?
That would be great. Thank you.
Sure. So just a very quick reminder, you know, the board appointed a charter review committee. Rich Penny was the chair. The committee also hired an external consultant to help them with their work. They did a tremendous amount of work, had a very thoughtful charter update that was presented at the town meeting. And included in your package, just as a refresher, was the, the work product that the consultant helped the committee put together, which was a side-by-side of the current charter and the proposed charter and all the things that were changed. Unfortunately, it did not pass, and it, and it wasn't, wasn't a nail-biter. It was a pretty clear, you know, no vote. So you have several options on where, where you want to go forward, because just like with any other initiative, just because something got voted down doesn't mean that the problems were fixed. You know, we're, we're still facing a lot of difficulties with the, with the outdated charter. You have a number of options. You could bring forward the entire exact same proposal again. Personally, I feel like that's not the best choice, because I worry the voters might get angry that they just voted no for that whole thing, and why are you not listening and bringing it immediately back? So I suspect, I don't know exactly what Rich will say, but I, I suspect where he might go would be to target a little bit toward just, you know, some specific initiatives. And, and talking to Attorney Clifford, you know, you, you could, there's kind of two different ways you could go about something like this. You could, you know, hear what Rich has the same night, maybe have this on the agenda for other nights. And you could just, you know, the select board could just decide what do you want to present to voters. Or you could certainly ask Rich, you know, if he wants to poll the, the charter review committee members, because that committee has disbanded, they were not re, not reappointed, to see if they're willing to kind of reconvene, get reappointed, and maybe work on a Plan B that they could work on over the next couple of months and present to you. And then you could decide whether to go forward with that. Those are just some of the options I think you have. But I don't want to step on Rich's toes anymore than I already have. So I hope that's a helpful, helpful intro.
No, thanks, Doug. And, you know, as I talk, open dialogue, hopefully get feedback. And this is, you know, some opinions from the, from the, from the committee. So we worked about a year and a half on reviewing every aspect of the previous charter, which is at this point fifty-four years old. And at the time, there was discussions, how do we go about it? Right? Do we, do we look to revise the entire, entire charter? Do we actually look at specific areas to, to, to change? And at the end of the day, the decision was made, and Board of Selectmen was, was in favor, to look to update the entire charter. So it was a full review and revision of a fifty-four-year-old charter. What, what we found out, which I don't think was a total surprise, the one area that really there was a lot of pushback was on the elected positions. So historically, we've had the four positions that had been elected, and they continue to be today. I do think, my own personal opinion, I think it's an antiquated system. It's not best for the town, but that's just my opinion. The voters spoke pretty loud that they're not interested in that, at least at this point. Kind of going back to community engagement, you know, looking back, could we have done more on the community engagement? I think the answer is always yes. We did have a, an engagement night, and unfortunately, we had six people that showed up. And, you know, as we went through it, I think that there are some areas today that we could have an impact in the town government without touching the elected officials at this point. Right? Not saying that that doesn't get reviewed and, and looked at down the road, but there, there are a couple of areas that, as we look. So having a charter that's fifty-four years old, that language is fifty-four years old. It's not in compliance with what the state recommends today, how things are done. We really need to look to clean up a lot of that language. You know, a lot of it is clarify timelines, who is responsible, and how the town budget. So Doug, earlier today. So, you know, we, we have to, because of the charter, put a budget forth before January first. As Doug said, we don't, we have nothing from the state. It is, it is just a combination of some numbers that, that means nothing. I sat on the Finance Committee for ten years, along with a couple of current members on the Board of Selectmen, and we would get that document on January first. Exactly. Right? So, you know, by the time that we went through the whole process, what was presented in January first and, and what we were approving about mid-April, there was no, it wasn't even close. Right? So things like that. Update the language for recall process. So at times, you don't know what you don't know. So the recall process today was written fifty-four years ago. What we found out in two thousand and eighteen was that it is incredibly cumbersome to try to recall someone within the town. Now, with that being said, it should not be an easy process. Right? Like, you don't take that lightly. But what happened in two thousand and eighteen, what we found out was, the process was so cumbersome that we really needed to force those elected officials to resign, because otherwise, we were never gonna get a recall done. Update the, I, I mentioned that about updating within the, within the state guidelines. Another area that I think is really important is our elected in-town boards. Now, as we went through and looking at the structure of the town, no one on the committee felt that we should do anything with the elected or appointed boards. They are, I think, necessary. I think that they are a great thing. When we talk about community engagement, it's an opportunity to engage citizens. Although, as we have seen over the last few years, we are struggling at times to find people that want to run. You know, we have a, we have an elected board today that the last two elections were actually write-ins. And we have open seats both on appointed and elected boards. But one of the things, as we reviewed, what we found is that our current charter is not consistent with elected and, and appointed boards in what their, what their task with and what their duties are. And one of the things that we wanted to do was standardize what And one of the things that we wanted to do was standardize what, and clarify exactly what those boards are there for. You know, and what are they there for? They're really there for the citizens, right? To have a voice for the residents, to make sure that, as you're looking at whatever committee that they're on, whether it's conservation, to park, to sewer, to library, right? That they're looking out for the best interest, and also looking, in the future, processes, procedures, what direction does that board want to go? But we are inconsistent in what they're asking, what we are asking them to do. And at times, I think we're asking those boards to do more than what, in essence, is a part-time volunteer person, right? So, you know, I think that's a real key point that I think we could make an impact in the town and how it's run, and how the town is able to do things. You know, some of the things that we, as a resident, so I've lived here my whole life. So one of the challenges that we faced over the last decade and a half, and something that we're, you know, talking with right now is a fire station, right? We've had to do a couple of schools. We've done a senior center. And the reason why a lot of these has happened, we're facing a potential large bill with the sewer system. Part of the reason why we, as a community, have had to address these over the last 15 years is the structure of the town. So there's nothing in place to do long-term planning. And how this town is structured today is almost in crisis management. What's the crisis that hit today, and then how do we address it? And when you manage it that way, and this is unfortunately how the charter is structured, you get, in a short period of time, right, all these bills. If you look at the history, you go back to the '70s. That was the last time that the town ran into some crisis management, and you saw construction happen in that. And then it just went, it just went along, right? There was no real plan, and then all of a sudden, the infrastructure starts collapsing. So again, you know, as we look at it, and we structure some of these things and how we can do things, I think that we can make some impacts. And that's kind of clarifying the managing of town property and buildings. Someone who's been involved in town for almost 20 years, and this is nothing against Chief Duffy, because he does a tremendous job, but his job should be running a fire department, not managing a fire station and trying to figure out how that stays operational while, long-term, what do we do? You know, or someone who is on the senior center, right? That now has a building responsibility under. And because of the way the charter is written and how the boards are set up, that's unfortunately how we have things today. So, you know, I do want to make one other point because I think that there was a little bit of misunderstanding. As we talked about the charter and reviewed it, there were two departments that did not fall under this, and that is the school and the water. And the reason why is the school runs in a whole separate, under DESI, and it comes under a different, whole different aspect of the town charter. And the water is, because it's joint with Abington and Rockland, if there were ever to be any changes, there has to be a joint effort with the town of Abington. And when we tackled this, we did this as Rockland itself. So those two areas weren't discussed or talked about. All right? Questions? I know I kind of hit it, what your points, I was rambling all over the place.
I guess I don't really have a question, maybe more of a suggestion if we do move forward with this again, maybe doing a little bit of a postmortem of what happened. I think tactically, it was a mistake to go all or nothing on everything. I think there's a lot of things in here that you mentioned, like the recall, the budget, lowering the quorum. If those were individual warrant articles, all of them would have passed. It was, you're right, it was the elected officials that blew up the whole thing. So if we do go forward this, again, my suggestion to your committee would be to give us, you know, 10 things that you want to do, and make sure that, you know, if one, three, and five pass, that it doesn't screw up anything else. I know that was part of the reason why you wanted it, all or nothing, but try to find a way to make it that if these individuals pass, they can, you know, they can stand alone without kind of throwing every monkey wrench into the rest of the charter. That'd be my one suggestion to the committee.
Well, I think, Rich, you said it right when you said you had the engagement meetings, and you had six people show up. I think this ties into Courtney and Allison's discussion earlier, their presentation, and how to get residents of the community engaged. Because I think there's a lot of misinformation out there, and I think there was a specific group that wound up being the majority that night that regardless of whether or not you corrected their information, they were singularly minded to go against that charter for whatever reasons. I heard feedback that one of the reasons was because I wanted it, and they were determined to vote against whatever I wanted. So, which is funny, because if that charter had passed, I was planning on resigning shortly after because I would have felt a sense of accomplishment and moved on, but they got me for another term.
Which I told the group, I said, if you just went with it, he was gone.
He was gone, yeah. They got me for another term, so we're lucky then. They might have me forever if it doesn't pass, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, right? Interesting dynamics. I do think at times, a small group, either way, either for something or against something, because there is such little engagement overall with the townspeople, that if you organize a group one way or another, you really can have influence in what happens in this town. And I don't think that's a great thing to have, right? Because now you start talking about what are the personal issues. You know, we've seen over the last couple of years, some things at town meeting, you know, where things were passed or things weren't passed because there was perceptions of what was going on, and it wasn't really what was happening, and could actually impact residents. You know, we started going back to the flood insurance, right? Somehow, that turned into, you know, tied into other things. Well, they thought it was tied into other things. It was totally separate. And by doing what they did, if we didn't undo it the following year, I don't know, it was about 76 residents in town that literally would not have had coverage should a flood occur, for no other reason than personal agendas. But that's beside the fact. Here's the reality. We have a town charter that's 54 years old. When we did the review, we compared it with 10 other towns throughout the Commonwealth. We tried to match it up that the towns were in a comparison to Rockland, meaning socioeconomic, population, the type of government they have. You know, we started looking at things. We really were, we are antiquated, you know, and it handties the officials. You know, one of the reasons, I'm going to be honest with you. One of the reasons I did not run again for Board of Selectmen, you know, this fallacy of the Board of Selectmen run the town. I can tell you right now, from being someone on it, I had way more influence on the town sitting on the Finance Committee than I did as a member of the Board of Selectmen.
Rich, we brought Dave Taylor in tonight to talk about streetlights. Why did the Selectmen bring him in? Because people come to the Selectmen asking about streetlights. It's got nothing to do with, it's the highway department. Or, you know, people ask about, you know, hypothetically, or they ask about their trash situation. That's got nothing to do with the Board of Selectmen. And that's because we have all these individual boards. They ask why a field may not be mowed or something like that, or they ask it, bullying at schools. And so we have nothing to do with that.
And this is one of the reasons why, and Mike, you know, I started talking about this, I started talking about this in 2017 or 18.
We've been talking about this since 2012.
Well, no, but I mean, me personally, like, really diving into this. And one of the things is, when you look at how, and I don't care if it's city, towns with newer charters, or, you know, private business, you can easily say, who is the head of the organization? We had an interesting first meeting. We had an outside consultant, and one of the first things was, well, let me see your org chart. I said, we don't have one. They said, okay, let's put one together. I kind of laughed, and we revisited a month later, after multiple conversations. Now, this is an organization that has done about 125 or 130 charters. And they said, for the very first time, they were not able to put together an org chart. There is no leadership in this town. And that's a challenge for someone who has lived here their whole life. It resonates with some of the challenges that we see on a daily basis, right? How we try to get things done in this town. It's kind of amazing, to be honest with you, some of the things that are able to get done with the structure that we have. And the whole thought of this, when we put this committee together, it's not about, it's about nothing other than allowing this town to function more efficiently for the residents. It's not taking anything away. It's not taking your vote away. It's, you know, it's not making it more difficult. It's actually putting a structure together that is off the basis of, you know, at this point, about 186 towns, I think it is, that have a newer charter that this foundation is based on. You know, it's not based on anything else. That's why we brought an outside consultant in, because it was an owner in town that had expertise towards writing a charter. And I think that's, I think that was a huge part of this, and I thank the Board of Selectmen of, you know, putting money in the budget to do that where we had professionals to come in and do it. So, you know, it's just my recommendation. I think that there are a lot of things in the charter, in the new revised charter, that could have a significant impact on the day-to-day, and we can bypass the elected positions. You know, it was very, very clear in talking to people after the fact. A lot of people said, hey, we really liked a lot of things that were in it. It just, it was the elected positions. Now, why they hung up on it, I don't know. They have this perception that we're taking something away. But you know what? We can leave the elected positions. We can address that at another time or just leave it as elected, but we can still do some things. We'd have to do a little bit of modifications. But mostly other things, you know, standardizing the boards, getting clarity of who's managing, you know, the town property, the buildings. You know, updating language in there, you know, whether it's recall, whether it's actually bringing the language into 2024, not 1970, right? And a lot of those are really low-hanging, simple things to do that the general public wouldn't even see, wouldn't see a difference, but it allows you and the town government to be able to function more efficiently.
Another thing I would have loved to have seen at town meeting was the Collins Center being there, so you weren't up there alone, so there'd be expertise in case people had further questions. I would have loved to have seen your Vice Chair Judy Hardigan up there to support you because I think she has a lot of experience in town.
Laurie, that was my choice.
Oh, it was? Oh, okay.
So the Collins Center, they're an independent third party. They, we knew that from the get-go. That was not what their purview was to go up and advocate for anything. They strictly were there for the whole process, to try to help us, guide us, and put together a document that would be impactful to the town. As far as going up there, that was my choice. I didn't think it was going to be a friendly environment, and I didn't want to put anyone else up there.
I understand.
So, you know, if there was going to be someone to take the heat, it was going to be me.
On that one point, which is, I did actually ask the Collins Center, you know, what their receptivity would have been to attending town meetings and potentially answering questions, and they were not comfortable doing that, just as Rich said. They, you know, they really see their role as support to town leadership and committees that are putting things together. But I guess in their experience, they've found that, you know, being the face of something on the floor of a town meeting, you know, outsiders, you know, just doesn't go over well, so I just wanted to let you know that that was something I, you know, we did explore, but it just didn't make sense, unfortunately.
Okay. Well, just to have them there to, you know, verify facts and stuff like that.
Yeah, it wasn't going to happen.
Okay, all right. And I also wanted to point out that, you know, even if we did pass a bunch of stuff at an upcoming town meeting, it still takes another year for the state to certify it, right?
Yeah, so as it goes through, it has to go through the Senate, the House, and then eventually get signed off on by the governor. I know we did a couple of minor things a couple of years ago, and Doug, what was it about?
The Select Board.
The Select Board.
Eight or nine months?
Oh, it took over a year.
Yeah, that one actually went pretty quick. I have to say, I was pleased, but, you know, it can easily take a year.
Yeah.
Because, as you said, you know, business is efficient, government is not. And in this case, we were trying to become more efficient.
So the other part of this, because that, so when we did a couple of things, and they were really low-hanging fruit types of things, changed the name of, you know, the old youth commission and a few things like that, those are very, very easy, and it went, as Doug said, quicker than normal. You know, as part of this charter review, there was an Article 7 that would be added to it, which actually details how this would change, right? And some of the timelines. When we had the elected officials in there, it was potentially going to take three years to go through. If we take the elected officials out and do some of the other things, my guess is that it's going to be somewhere probably 12 to 15 months by the time it goes through, gets approved, gets signed off on the government, the governor, and that we can actually implement it.
Tiffany, can I jump in with one other point?
Yes, please.
I know it's a little awkward when I'm on that TV, but I agree with everything that's been said, and I agree with John Ellard's points about, you know, targeting individual, you know, kind of specific things. I think the one thing that we'll have to be careful of, and we'll make that a little more complicated, is in the end, it's one document. It's one town charter. And so if we present a bunch of different piecemeal things and separate articles, but only some of them pass, as a whole, the entire charter still has to read properly and still has to interrelate properly. And so I know John Clifford's on here, and that's something I think we'll just have to work with John to make sure we, if we go forward with this, and some things pass at town meetings, some things don't, that the special act request that gets sent to the legislature is somehow reflective of the town meeting vote, but also makes sense. Because that was one of the benefits of the all-or-nothing approach was we knew, what we were proposing was a cohesive document that worked. And if we break it up into pieces, we just got to make sure that all the references and things still work, if only some of them are approved and not others.
So to Doug's point, that was a really tricky part of it. So when you're, when we did a couple of small things, like changing the name or, you know, we did in the assesses, it doesn't really have an impact on the rest of the charter. But as you go through and you start to change some language, and some of it's just boilerplate language, but it is language that changes to meet, you know, today. If you break it into a bunch of different articles, and one passes and the other one doesn't, what's going to end up happening is that it's not going to get approved by the state, right? So if that language isn't matching up with something that does get approved, and then something doesn't. So we got to be very cognizant of how we do it. And we can put it together in a couple of different articles, but a, you know, and I don't know how many. We'd have to look at it. But my guess is probably no more than two or three versus putting together 10. Because if you put together 10, if one doesn't pass, it may imp- Because if you put together ten, if one doesn't pass, it may impact other ones just because of how how it's written and how it flows. I learned way too much about charters on this thing.
You're working for the Collins Center, then?
What's that?
You're working for the Collins Center?
No, no, no.
But can I state that by breaking it down, you're going to you're going to encourage people to read it? They're going to look at the, you know, a whole proposal. Nope, they want to change everything.
Yeah.
And they're not going to read it. Because having been in this town for generations, I've heard the stories about it was always a wink, wink, nod, nod backroom. So when you when you try to overwhelm people by giving them too much, they're going to just go, nope, they want to change everything, and they're not going to pay attention. I went through this because I haven't been here forever. So I went through this and said, okay, that makes sense. Yep, that makes sense. Oh, look at that. They didn't change anything. Oh, yep, yep, that would make sense. So if you break it down, then, like you say, you're going to encourage people to actually pay attention to what you're trying to do. When you put it all together. I know too many people who are going to go, oh, sure, they want to change everything, you know. We've been we've been perfect all these years, and now you just want to change everything. So.
No, I hear you. I I.
We haven't been perfect, but, you know.
No, I know. I do think the Collins Center did a did a great job in helping us with, and and we actually had it on 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 the town site, where it had the existing charter in all the language, and it had the, um, new charter proposed. And everywhere that there was a change, it was highlighted in yellow. To your point on it, it's a it's a large document, right? And it's it it, listen, it, there's a reason why we worked on it for a year and a half. I mean, we went over in detail. So to ask someone to to read through it, man, unless they wanted to take a nap, you know, there's no reason to do it. So we tried to do that and and make the highlights in yellow. But even with that, the document's so large, it takes a lot. So to your point, you know, maybe we do look at at creating a a couple of different articles. We just have to be really, really careful and work with John that when we put things together, that we're not, it it, like, we can't do, like, ten or twelve separate articles.
You're not contradicting something else?
Yeah, we got to make sure it's all kind of grouped together and then do it. And then that way, it either all passes or it doesn't.
Because then we just subject to interpretation. You know, what what, that's the case we're in now, is it looks like a lot of things were piecemealed over the years. And it's, you're sitting back, and it's like, all right, well, this is in charge of that, but this says that you're not in charge of this, but that's in charge. So there's different different things out there, and I think just bringing it down to the most basic level. I I guess I agree. I mean, I think I think what you guys did was was perfect. I think you guys did the elements work. You guys followed exactly what the assignment was, and you guys presented the townspeople what I think is a charter that the town could have functioned with for the next hundred years, the next fifty-four years, whatever. I say fifty years, anyway.
So we.
But I think going forward to John's point, you know, we've got people that are just adamant that they want to elect their people. They want to vote for people that run on opposed every.
Which is fine. You can work around. I I will tell you one of the things that was added in, um, that there's mandatory reviews. It's not in the existing charter. Now, there's a, there's a charter review, but there's no, there's no real direction on it. So what we put in here is that there's mandatory reviews, um, for bylaws and for the charter. So every every ten years, the the bylaws and the charter, and and they're on corresponding. So it's five years bylaws, ten-year charter, five year, uh, again, that way it, when we're all gone, they're going to have to create a committee and and review it with the thought of fifty-four years from now, they don't have to go, crap, we have a fifty-four-year-old charter that hasn't been reviewed, and what do we do? Right? So that was also as part of of what we did.
So let me ask, I guess, going forward, you know, in order to to bring this back in front of the people, there is currently a three-person charter maintenance committee that still exists, with a seven-year term, I believe, for for each of you. So that still exists. Would it be something, and maybe this is something for Attorney Clifford, would it be something for that that potentially that charter maintenance committee just goes through what has already been reviewed by the charter review committee? And edits out what the recommendations of the select board are for, you know, what was taken in tonight to maybe go forward? Would it be enough for them to just do, or would we have to, you know, reconvene the entire committee and have them put that forward?
My suggestion is that Rich gather the former members, discuss it informally with them. How much work do we think we really need to do? If there's, you know, if they're going to put in more time, I suggest that you reappoint really the same members. I mean, I concur with what other people have said. This committee's work was really exemplary. It was incredibly thorough, incredibly viable. I don't think you need to go back and start over with new members. So if all of the members or most of the members are willing to reconvene and and try to present you with different options to put on this year's town meeting warrant, I think that that makes sense. But I don't think you need to decide that tonight. I think it'd be better to find out just what's the level of interest from the former members.
Because we do have the the maintenance committee that that could do this, so.
Yeah, and I did, Mike, can I just restate your question for John? Because, John, what I think Mike was asking was, the charter review committee has been disbanded because they weren't reappointed, but the three charter maintenance are still active. And so I think Mike was asking, is this something the existing charter maintenance could do, or should it be the full charter review? And I just want to make sure you heard that part of this question.
No, I did. I think I think it would be better to get the logic grouped together if, you know, just to get that full perspective.
So we did. We did have with with six members.
Which was, tonight is, I think there were different takeaways from town meeting, different perspectives. You know, we all heard different things, different areas where we might, we'd be good. So I I suggest getting the bigger group together. The charter maintenance committee, three people may just have a different view entirely than the full committee would have.
And I I have had quite a few members of the charter review committee come up to me, express their disappointment in the fact that they worked as hard as they did, and it seemed as though people's minds were made up without listening or or even reading the the new presentation that was that was given. And that they have offered their services to jump back on that committee before again, if possible. So I don't think you'll have any issues with the recruitment process going forward.
And and just one other thing under the charter, of the existing charter, you can create them as an ad hoc committee through the next town meeting, if if that's what you choose to do.
So so I guess that's the question is, um, and and this is more of the Board of Selectmen. So part of this becomes a timing. Is is this something that you have an appetite to try to put on this coming town meeting? If that's the case, then, John, we wouldn't be able to to put, um, the ad hoc together. We would have to do it through charter maintenance because of the timing. Otherwise, it would it would be another year. Because it gets, it's it's at town meeting, I believe, that it gets, correct?
No, I think we approved the ad hoc. We created the committee.
Is it? Is is the Board of Selectmen, or is it done at at town meeting?
Ad hoc committees can be created by the select board.
All right, okay.
Through the next town meeting, if it's going to go.
Oh, through the, that's through the next town meeting. That's right. That's right.
Creator, permanent, permanent committees at town meeting.
Yep. Okay. All right. I will reach out to all the former members.
So I I don't know if a motion is needed on it, or if we can just kind of reach consensus that we'd like to see that something come back?
Do we have consensus that we would like to?
I guess, can I ask one question? Are we just going to limit it to the six existing members? Or are we going to try to get a nine-member committee like initially was?
I think we just go with the six, because the other, because to John Clifford's point, bringing new people in now would not, would kind of change everything around.
So I guess that kind of goes to, so if we if we brought back the members that were part of this, there's there's no ramp up. They they were part of this whole thing. And if if you want to try to do something this coming town town meeting, I don't think it's fair to anyone to bring in so late. And we're talking, you know, we'd have to have this done by the beginning of April, just to bring just to bring somebody in who.
Really sooner than that, Rich, because the warrant is completely reviewed by town council, approved, a hundred percent done by the beginning of April. So it's really got to get done by the end of, in the March.
In the March.
Posted by the fourteenth.
Yeah.
You know, so I just, I I think it would be very difficult to bring to bring someone in. I I don't, I I think they would be so, you know, I could be wrong, but they they could be so overwhelmed. I I don't know how much impact it would be, but, you know.
Yeah, I I I think I think we make the recommendation, uh, that Chairman Penny reaches back out to his, the rest of his board that was existing at the end, and that they move forward to try to put something together. Recommendation is going forward to the Board of Selectmen at some point in March for us to make a decision to put in a warrant for, for that.
So I'm sorry, are we reforming the committee, or is this going to be kind of done almost like what the?
I think we're going to reappoint the ad hoc. We're going to recreate the ad hoc committee and reappoint the same people that were on it before.
Okay. I just want to make sure. So this is an actual committee? It's not something that was like what Courtney was mentioning, that they were?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, this should be an ad hoc committee. Yeah, it's an official appointment from the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we can.
Yeah, and to John's point, you know, once you guys approve the ad hoc committee, all the meetings are posted, the public meetings, minutes, you know.
Yeah, that's right.
And we can form that and limit it to just those six people. And actually, it's only three, because three of you are already on.
With the with the charter maintenance, you have to make them charter.
Yeah, so the so the charter maintenance was also on the.
Yeah, right. It's, yeah, I don't know why we have to, but I mean, there's a whole other thing.
Maintenance maintains it. It was just the ad hoc portion, so.
I still don't know why we have to. I hear what you said, but I still don't understand why we have to.
All right. You've got your prints way around, that's why.
Yeah, maybe, yeah. All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. All right, so next we have the removal of fire department from civil service, approval of the letter to the state. Chief Duffy, thank you for being here. I know that you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So this is exciting news regarding civil service. Was probably two, three annual town meetings ago, we, you know, we voted to get out. And, you know, we took all the proper steps, come out the way we came, we came in. We filed with the legislature, a home rule petition through Senator Keenan's office. We were kind of held hostage up there because the, you know, civil service was was being looked at, um, through the legislature in in looking at reform. So with the latest economic development bill from the the legislature that just passed and the governor signed, there was a a large civil service reform as part of that bill. Within that, they did have a a section where tho- those towns that were looking to get out had home rule petitions already in with the legislature, can and will be allowed to come out of civil service. Part of that was, um, we had to write a letter. This letter has to go to Civil Service Commissioner, the Human Resources Director, Personnel Director up at H R D in in State H R D. And then also, I I believe it was the, um, the EOPS Public Safety Oversight Committee, which, uh, and so, uh, with the help of John John Clifford's office, we got that letter written. And it it was in the office for for Tiffany to sign. It needed to be signed by the the Chairperson of the Board of the Select Board, and also the Fire Chief. So fingers crossed that all goes well with this, in that as of March first, twenty twenty-five, we'll finally be out of civil service and be able to, you know, do things the way we need to do to get a more diverse and, um, you know, better hiring and and promotional process for the fire department.
Right, so with that said, we need a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I I I'd make a motion in a second if I could. This has been a a long fight.
Right.
Yeah.
And and I'm glad you you guys stuck with it. I'm glad the state came to their senses and listened to the will of the people of Rockland.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, I think we're fortunate. We had the home rule petition in because those towns that do still want to get out, but that didn't have that, they're still being held hostage, so it's it's too bad.
So I'll make a motion to keep the proof of the law.
I'll make a second and a third.
And all those in favor?
Thank you all for your support for this. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the annual license renewals. And, um, Mr. Charles, would you be able to reinforce?
Sure, I just took a sip of water.
Thank you.
Okay. Pending, all obligations are met for Common Victular Space Bistro from three twenty-three Union Street, The Banner, one sixty-seven Union Street, Corner Grill, three twelve Union Street, Dina's Pizza, nine thirty Hingham Street, Dunkin' Donuts, eight fifty-one Hingham Street, Dunkin' Donuts, eleven forty-nine Hingham Street, Fab Five Haitian Bistro, three forty-seven Center Ave, Harmon Golf and Fitness Club, sixteen eighty-six Concord Street, King Beebe's Pizzeria, four forty Union Street, Luca South, nine thirty-three Hingham Street, Magoo's Ice Cream, one ninety V F W Drive, Mike's Pizzeria, three fifteen Union Street, Mimi's Cuban Cafe, two hundred V F W Drive, Oriental Express, eight West Water Street, Rockland Golf Course, two seventy-six Plain Street, Roy's Kebab, nine hundred Hingham Street, Santa Fe Burrito Grill, Rockland, one hundred Market Street, Seasons Cafe, nine thirty-eight Hingham Street, TK O'Shares, nine thirty-four Hingham Street, The Hole-in-One, forty-two Market Street, Top Shelf Bistro, one twenty, Bill Delahunt Parkway, the Ban, oh, Automatic Amusement, The Banner, one sixty-seven Union Street, Fraternal Order of Eagles, twenty-nine Park Street, Old Colony V F W, twenty-two Church Street, Rockland Ice Rink, Trytown, five ninety-nine Summer Street, Entertainment, The Banner, one sixty-seven Union Street, Fraternal Order of Eagles, twenty-nine Park Street, Harmon Golf and Fitness Club, eighteen, uh, sixteen eighty-six Concord Street, Luca South, nine thirty-three Hingham Street, Mike's Pizzeria, three fifteen Union Street, Old Colony V F W, twenty-two Church Street, Rockland Golf Course, two seventy-six Plain Street, Rockland Ice Rink, Trytown, five ninety-nine Summer Street, TK O'Shares, nine thirty-four Hingham Street, Top Shelf Bistro, one twenty, Bill Delahunt Parkway, Lodging, Union Street Trust, five Union Street, um, ninety-two Church Street, L L C, ninety-two Church Street, Inholder, The Banner, one sixty-seven Union Street, Class One, Leisure Woods, thirty-one Leisure Woods Drive, Live Oaks, six eighty Union Street, Class Two, Advanced Auto Center, or Advanced Auto Center, four oh nine V F W Drive, Andrade Auto Services and Sales, two fifty Webster Street, Fader Motors, fifteen Bishop Lane, Lou's Autobody, five seventy-seven Market Street, and in our automotive repair, thirty-one East Water Street, Trust Petroleum, one oh four Market Street, Used Dealer, Nostalgia Games, one fifty-five Union Street.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve? Go have a second. All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
Yep.
Other old business not reasonably anticipated?
We have none.
Okay. Next, we have select board liaison updates. Do we have any?
Yep. I do. Yeah, um, it it's with the Board of Health. On November nineteenth, I attended their last meeting, and there were two things that came up. Robert Stevens, the Chair of that board, um, was questioning, um, having some sort of oversight as far as PFAS and our water is concerned, because he felt it was a health issue. And without realizing that the water department is knee-deep to their elbows in getting this corrected already with the twenty-six million dollar loan that we split equally with Abington to replace the GAC filters and finishing filters at the Hingham Street plant. They built out the Hingham Street plant. They plan to have zero PFAS by, um, the summer of twenty twenty-five. So I pointed all of this out to Robert, and, um, he was surprised that there were such interesting developments at the water department. So, um, that that's the update. Another thing, um, they couldn't, uh, they agreed as a board that they couldn't meet in December. Robert was kind of adamant about meeting in December. They looked at the charter. And, um, anytime they, um, they they have to have a two-thirds vote not to meet, and then to meet within, uh, four weeks thereafter. So, um, that wasn't done, but there, at one point, um,
So that wasn't done, but there, at one point, Deli and Michelle Kennedy wanted to chime in with their opinions, and he turned to them, and he said, you guys are not ready, and went back to, and went back to Mike Hugo with the Mass Association of Health Boards that was explaining the, how, how other towns did this. And up to this point, I don't see that they've scheduled a December meeting, so that's my update.
Thank you.
And it's all on W R P S, by the way, so just wanted to point that out.
Do we have any other updates tonight? Okay. Assistant Town Administrator and Town Administrators Report and Correspondents.
So I don't think Courtney has anything, I just have a couple of very quick things. The first is, I had my follow-up with my surgeon, and I'm pleased to say things are going well, and if all continues to go according to plan, I'll be able to be physically back in the office the day after New Year's on January second, so I'll be looking forward to that. Next, I wanted to recognize, following what we did, what you did at the beginning of the meeting, on your community announcements with Peter Yul, I want to recognize Ralph Tanzi, he is retiring from the Highway Department with thirty-nine years of service. So normally thirty-nine years would be a record, Peter beat him by one year, so I really want to...
And one day.
Yeah, and a day, yeah, but I want to, I want to congratulate Ralph for that, and for, and to thank him for all of his years of service. Next, I just wanted to briefly mention that our tax rate was officially approved by the Department of Revenue, the new tax rate is thirteen dollars and sixty-seven cents, and I want to thank all the financial department heads for their work on that, it's a joint effort, so I really want to thank all of them, and especially, of course, our assessor, Meg. Next, I wanted to highlight that I'm in active discussions with the town of Whitman, in particular with their town administrator, I think a number of you are aware that there's, the town of Whitman owned land in Rockland near the McCarthy Farm, formerly known as the Camp Alice Carlton property, they are looking potentially at selling that land, and they're expressing interest in selling it to Rockland for restricted open space purposes, so we're, I'm in active communications with their town administrator, and I'll be sure to update you more on that in the future. We'll explore all options, whether it's state grants, Community Preservation Act funding, things like that, but there's a lot of details still to be sorted out, and at, at this point in time, and I, at this point in time, I'm not even sure that they have the town meeting authority to sell it yet, but I'll, I'll work through that with them. Next, I just wanted to highlight that the fire chief got a new, new fire engine is in, and he sent me a picture of it, I can forward it to the board later, and it really highlights the need for a new station, because there's literally not an inch to spare with a new truck. As trucks get bigger, our, our current station just continues to be more and more of a problem. Next, I wanted to highlight that there's a twenty-five thousand dollar earmark that was put in the, the state budget for the Rockland School Department to help them with some of their sped costs, and in particular, I want to thank Rick DeCoast's office for helping us with that, and especially for helping us navigate the process through the state agencies to actually activate and access those funds, so we're on the home stretch there. And then lastly, a police station roof and H V A C project that I've talked about for quite some time is now complete, it is all done, there's just some final punch list items that'll be completed within the next month, but we are in good shape there. So that's all I have, and I look forward to seeing you in person at, at your next meeting.
Great, it's great news. Select Board comments, comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the select board and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member, select board member, Olafland.
I, I don't really have anything tonight, outside of just, you know, wishing everybody a happy holidays and happy new year, and hoping everybody has a safe and peaceful holiday season.
Select Board member, Eller.
Yeah, same thing, everybody have a good Christmas, Hanukkah, and, and a happy new year as well.
Also, I'm sorry, just real quick, and also happy birthday to Donna, who is, we've Christmas Day, is that?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
Select Board member, Shore.
Thanks for that.
I get you every year.
I know you do. I was hoping you'd forget.
I didn't.
I would like to wish everybody a happy and safe holiday season.
Thank you. Advice to your child.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Birthday, Donna.
Thank you.
Happy Birthday today to my husband, our own buddy, the elf, and that's all I got.
All right, and happy holidays to everyone. I did attend with my daughter the Candy Cane event with Rockland Recreation, which was wonderful, so you guys did a great job with that. And on a personal note, I'd like to wish my husband a happy anniversary, this was a great way to celebrate. Happy holidays, everyone, and to a happy new year.
Cheers.
Do I have a motion? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right.